It being six oh four P M. I call the May two thousand and twenty-two Town of Clayton Planning Board meeting to order. For roll call, board members Begley, Dupree, Williams, and Lee are absent. We do have a quorum. Item two on our agenda is, are there any adjustments to the agenda needed? Okay, if there are none, we'll move on to item three, approval of the April two thousand and twenty-two minutes. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes, or are there any corrections? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to accept the minutes.
Motion to accept the minutes.
Have a motion by board member Powers. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by board member Bennett. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is a codify Clayton, Clayton. Unite the U D C Steering Committee. Tonight, we have joining us as part of the U D C Steering Committee, Uniform Development Code Steering Committee, is Marty Bizel, the Board of Adjustment Chair, Tam- Thomas Antoine from the Board of Adjustment, and Jim Pericon, if I'm pronouncing it right, from the Board of Adjustment. We're going to turn it over with Chad Meadows with Code Right Planners for a presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, board members, B O A members. I'm Chad Meadows. I'm principal of Code Right, and it's my pleasure to be here with you this evening. So I thought what we would do is spend the next hour or so introducing the Codify Clayton project, talking about the team, talking about the scope, the schedule, sharing some of the feedback that we've collected thus far, and then hearing y'all's thoughts, if you have any, about the U D C, the current development review process. And then finally, next steps, where do we go from here? Okay. So Codify Clayton is an update to the town's unified development code, all right? So this is a significant overhaul to the document. I know that the town recently went through the one sixty D revisions that were based on the changes to the North Carolina planning enabling statutes. That was more of a, well, it's just not going to go into as much, that didn't go into as much detail as this will. We would anticipate a series of more profound changes to your district provisions, to your design standards, to some of the basic nuts and bolts pieces of your U D C. So this is, this is not the one sixty D level. This is a little bit deeper than that, though we do expect to carry forward several of the, of the one sixty D changes that were made. So it's not that we're reinventing the wheel, it's just that we're digging a little bit deeper. So based on the R F Q for this project that was issued a few months ago, and on the discussions that we've conducted to date, there's five or six kind of project objectives. So let's talk about some of these. Obviously, implementing your growth plan. In two thousand and twenty-one, the town adopted the comprehensive growth plan, and it sets down the futures, the future vision for the community, where you guys want to go when you grow up, et cetera, provides a lot of guidance with respect to issues of development and future land use. We want to make the U D C more user friendly. We want to make it more predictable. This is an important one, and it's one that's been raised by numerous stakeholders that we've talked about or talked with over the past few weeks, and that is raising the bar for development quality generally, that one of the goals of the project is to up the town's game with respect to design quality, to development quality. So that's something that we'll be talking about in, in great detail in the coming weeks. We want to accommodate a wider range of housing choices. We're all familiar with the housing crisis that the country's facing. Dealing with the challenges that are presented to us with respect to housing is, is something that, that everybody needs to be thinking about, and it's certainly included within the purview of this project. At the same time, you know, we want to encourage employment generating uses. We want to make sure that there are jobs in Clayton so that people don't necessarily have to spend an hour and a half in the car driving to the other side of Raleigh, creating some opportunities for people to be employed here. Fostering downtown and redevelopment in the downtown, also something that we've heard a lot about. There's a strong market for commercial development downtown, so much so that we're seeing conversion of residential structures into commercial use. At the same time, it seems like there's a fair amount of commercial stock that's sitting vacant here in town, and what do we do about that? And how do we foster the kinds of infill and redevelopment that are going to make downtown Clayton a place to be, a place that people want to come to and spend time, or at least more so than it is already? And then finally, protecting community character and property values. Everybody holds near and dear, you know, that small-town spirit, the small-town atmosphere that you guys have developed over the years, and that's something that needs to be protected. At the same time, we also need to protect property values. So there may be others, other project objectives as well, and I'd like to kind of circle back to that topic with you guys in a few minutes, in case you have some thoughts about other aspects of Codify Clayton that, that we should be including as project objectives. So let me tell you a little bit now about the team. So there's two firms. There's Code Right, my firm, and I'm joined in this effort by the Timmins Group, which you may be familiar with. So, so Code Right's my firm. I am the, I'll be the project manager for the project. I'm also the key, key code drafter. I've been a public and private sector planner for almost thirty years, and I've been a code drafter for the last nineteen of those thirty. I started Code Right, it's, it's my company. I started it in two thousand and fourteen, and I've drafted development codes across the state. So Clayton's, Clayton's code will be my eleventh code that I've drafted for in North Carolina community, though I've had an opportunity to work across the country. I'll also mention to you, shout out to my B O A members, I'm vice chair of the Durham City County Board of Adjustment. So I feel your pain in many ways. So I'm also joined by the Timmins Group. John Blasco is their team leader. John is a professional landscape architect. He also chairs the planning board in Garner, so he feels your pain and understands the challenges that you guys face. Timmins will be assisting with the web page, they'll be helping out with the testing component, and conducting peer review of the development standards and the infrastructure provisions that we embed in the U D C. So those are the two firms that will be working with you guys over the, the coming weeks and months. Let's talk about the scope and schedule a little bit. So there's seven steps in the process, and they're all shown right here on the screen. We're anticipating adoption, fingers crossed, adoption of the new U D C in September or October of two thousand and twenty-three, so about seventeen to eighteen months away, okay? Now, the first step is, has already, we've, we've been at work since April on the project, and we've gotten the first task largely completed, the project initiation task. We finalized the public engagement plan. We sorted out some project branding, which led to the Codify Clayton logo and the web page, et cetera, and we conducted a series of stakeholder interviews. I'm going to talk more about those in a minute. The next step in the process is the diagnosis. Think about the diagnosis as kind of the concept plan for the U D C. It sets down the project objectives, the key themes for improvement, and provides some focus discussion on a range of recommendations, ways to improve the current U D, U D C language. Project, task number three is the annotated outline. That's the sort of logical conclusion of the concept plan. You can think of it as the site plan for the U D C. It's going to set down the document organization, the structure, the page layout, the content, sort of a test run, if you will, for, for the, the U D C, which will then be drafted in task four. So over the winter of two thousand and twenty-two, spring of two thousand and twenty-three, we, the consulting team, the staff, and you, are going to be drafting up the, the first run at the, at the new U D C. We'll do this likely in three modules or groups of related chapters. I don't know yet what those are going to be. We'll decide on that together as we move through the process, but know that we're going to be sort of reviewing or managing this stuff in three different groups of related chapters. Each chapter will range in size from hundred and fifty to, you know, swallow hard, three hundred pages. So there's, there's a, there will be some, some fairly heavy lifting that we'll be asking committee members to, to engage in with respect to review of draft material and participation in discussion. Once we've gotten the draft of the document put together, so now fast forward to May two thousand and twenty-three, we're going to do some testing. And so we'll take five or six recently approved or recently developed site plans, developed under the current U D C, and we'll redo them under the new U D C rules. And the objective here is to allow us to have a comparison between what's on the books today and what's proposed. We'll work closely with the development community and poke holes, basically, in this draft U D C that we just put together. Try to find areas of weakness, try to find places to improve it, and frankly, to identify the strengths, the parts of the new U D C that we expect to work well. We always have changes after the testing component. This project will probably not be any different. There'll be some additional revision to the language after the testing component. New things have a tendency to bubble up, particularly when you're working on individual site plans. Our hope is to go through this testing part of the process before we enter the public hearing phase. Once we've done the testing and we've made the revisions to the draft of the U D C, we'll enter the adoption process, and that's essentially, you know, three public meetings or hearings or combinations thereof with you, with town council. And then finally, delivery. That will include the, the delivery of the adopted language, and then either some new application forms, or some additional manual work, or some other element that's going to supplement the work that's in the U D C, and some staff training. One of the things that's most important about this U D C, and one of the things that I think is most exciting about it, is the fact that the town is embarking on codifying the document themselves. And what that means is that you're going to have a much more visually rich document, you're going to have color on every page, you should expect to see anywhere from five hundred to seven hundred illustrations in your new code, and frankly, just a much easier document to navigate, particularly digitally. Since staff is codifying it themselves, you'll be able to maintain that in perpetuity, and I'll be here to train them on how to do that with the software that, that you guys already own and that they already know how to use. So I'm excited about that. I think it's going to be a nice part of the project. Let's talk about the web page for a second. And by the way, if you have any questions or anything, please feel free to stop me at any time. I'm happy to try to answer questions. We are going to spend a little bit of time talking about y'all's thoughts, but if a question comes up along the way, please don't hesitate to, to ask. So I've talked a lot about the project. There's more detail on the project, including the schedule, the draft work products, other information on the project webpage. So that's W W W dot codify Clayton dot com. And Ben has put this. So this is the project webpage. We will be maintaining this through the life of the project. This is where we will put new work material. We will post project updates like the, the latest news that you see there on the screen. Let me talk to you a little bit more about what's on this thing. Forgive my technical inabilities here. I'm going to try to walk and chew gum here. So move this over. Okay, so this is the, the homepage for the project. The first tab that you come to is the about. Just cruise through this stuff. This talks about what the project is, the project objectives, and so forth. This is, this is something I'm excited to share with you guys every month for the life of the project. We will be posting a monthly status report. Where are we? What did we do last month? What are we doing this month? How are we doing with respect to schedule, et cetera? That information will be provided. You see the one from May first on your screen, so you can click on that. I'm not going to do it now, but you see the link button over there, and you can pull, you can pull that PDF down and review it at your leisure. So that's something that we're committing to do to make sure that everybody is kept in the loop in terms of where we are and what we're working on, okay? And what comes next. We also have a frequently asked questions page. One of the nicest things about the frequently asked questions page. Go up a little bit. One of the nicest things about the frequently asked questions page is that you can ask a question. There is a place on the page for anyone who wishes to, you know, send staff a question. Those questions that come along that, you know, bring up something that's not already covered, we'll be happy to add to the frequently asked questions page. So the hope is that as questions arise, we'll answer those and post those answers to the F A Q page, okay? The documents tab sets down draft work product, so you can go there and get links to information like this presentation, which is right up there under U D C Committee Meeting Number One Introduction. So we'll be posting all of the PowerPoints that are prepared, all of the draft work products, et cetera. So that information will be there for you through the life of the project, in sequential order, most recent at the top. So this is a long table that stretches down. So this is a long table that stretches down. Schedule. We know schedule's important. This slide has some additional information about the schedule and the key milestones in the project, and then finally, participate. If you'd like to find out more about how to get involved, whether that's coming to a public forum, whether that's participating in one of these meetings, whether that's being part of the, the group that's going to involve themselves in testing, or frankly, any other questions you might have. At the bottom of the participation tab is also a place to enter your name and information and, and request additional details about how to be involved in the project. So that is the webpage. Again, something that the, the consulting team will be maintaining through the life of the project when we come to the end. If the town wants to have the domain, we're, we're certainly glad to hand that over if you'd like to have it, so. That should be the true test of the consultant. Can they pick up a computer that they've never used before and then operate while the cameras are on? Anyway, that's the webpage. Let's talk about what y'all's role here is. You guys are extremely important to this project, and I wanted to just take a couple of minutes and share with you, you know, how, how, how we need to avail ourselves of your services and, and the, the talents that you guys bring. So first off, it's really, really typical for these kinds of heavy-duty code overhaul projects to include an advisory committee. So that's very typical, and you guys are very much in line, you know, with that approach. And frankly, these days, most committees are comprised of other board members, you know, they've got you already, so they're just going to, you know, kind of get a little bit extra out of you by putting you on this group. Anyway, you guys are convened for two purposes, okay? And purpose number one is to provide your initial reactions to staff and the consulting team on the draft material that you're seeing and the code concepts that we're putting forth. The second thing that we would ask that you do is keep your individual consistencies informed about the project. People want to know how it's going, what's happening, what's new, where it's headed, et cetera. To the extent that you can keep your people and your networks informed about where the project is heading, that would be deeply appreciated. Sometimes misinformation can, can grow, and we would prefer that not to happen, and we're hoping that, you know, if somebody does ask you a question, that you'll be able to tell them about where we are and give them the truth of, of how things are going. So we do ask that you, you know, if you, if somebody asks a question, or you've got a constituency that you work with, please keep them informed about the project. Couple other things I'll mention. You know, you guys already wear different hats, particularly the planning board, okay? And your capacity as the UDC committee is not a planning board, okay? We are, you're, you're here as a sounding board and someone to give us your first blush reaction. This is not a voting body. It's not a recommendation body, nor is this a line-by-line review. If that's something that you want to do, there's time for that, but that's not now. Now is drafting the document and hearing some of the ideas, the concepts, and giving y'all's initial reactions to them, okay? If as planning board you decide, well, that Chad Meadows guy, he's crazy, and we're going to go through this thing line by line, that's your right, and that's something that would be appropriate when you're hearing this as the planning board, okay? Question, please? No? Okay. We're going to meet seven times, okay? So this is the first of our seven meetings, and frankly, more if we need to. Our meetings will happen at major milestones in the project, okay? So obviously, this introduction is our first. The next is our diagnosis report. Talk about that more in a minute. The annotated outline. We'll meet once for each of the, each of the draft modules. There's three draft modules of code material, and then we'll have a final meeting to kind of go over anything that's left, or cover anything that you guys want to circle back to and talk about some more. And again, you know, one of the things that we all understand is that the plan is usually the first casualty of war, and if we need to have more meetings because you guys feel that that's important, then that's what we'll do. This isn't about following the schedule. It's about coming up with a code project that you're comfortable with and that you're proud of. And so if we need to have more meetings, by gosh, that's what we'll do. We do hope, we do hope that our work will wrap up with the creation of the initial draft of the UDC sometime in May-ish of 2023. You guys will get draft work products a couple of weeks in advance. We ask that you come to meetings having read them, to the extent that you're able, and ready to participate in discussions. Raise your questions, bring your comments, and just know that, you know, we can always tweak this process as we need to going forward. The important thing is that everybody feels heard and that everybody feels like they had a chance to be involved and participate. I'll also mention that the town council will get detailed information as we move along. So we're going to keep them informed as we continue, okay? All right. Let's talk about what we've heard so far. So I mentioned earlier that one of the key parts of the project initiation task are the stakeholder interviews, right? Where we come to town and we talk to people who are already operating with the current development regulations, already submitting applications under the current review process, talking with staff, talking with elected officials, et cetera. And so we've conducted 10 interviews at this point. We have an initial list of concerns from those interviewees and from staff, not just planning staff, but other departments, engineering, et cetera. There is a summary, a feedback memorandum that's in the works. Usually, I provide that as part of this meeting, but we've sort of had some scheduling challenges, so I didn't complete the final interviews until today. So we'll finish up the summary memo in the next few days, and then staff will make that available to you. I expect to have it to you before the end of the week. It will also be an appendix in the diagnosis report, so no matter what, you'll see that information. Again, just a summary of, of, of kind of what we've heard and who we've met with. I wanted you to know that, you know, we've, we've cast the net broadly. We've, we've had four meetings, or tempted meetings, with development community members, three with council, and then a handful of others with staff, okay? So what did they say? And remember, this is not an exhaustive list. This is just a glimpse. You know, some of these comments you've probably already heard, maybe through the newly-formed chamber working group, maybe from staff, et cetera, but these are things that seemed important, and I wanted to raise your attention. First, there was a fair amount of talk about a disconnect in terms of the application of the standards across different departments. The, the right hand says zig and the left hand says zag, and applicants are kind of caught in the middle trying to understand what exactly does that mean and what, whose direction should I follow? There's a lot of discussion about the need for a more efficient review process generally, and fewer surprises in terms of either new comments on subsequent second, third, fourth reviews, or contradictory comments between the pre-app and the first submittal, or during subsequent submittals. Suggestion that pre-application conferences be conducted with, if not all town departments, at least more town departments, to make sure that all of the competing voices and viewpoints are there in the room to share that information with applicants. A need to address some conflicts between different codes, different policies, fire codes, et cetera. And this is going to be a challenge in this project, is dealing with how do we manage between the state building code, the fire code that we've adopted, the UDC, the town code of ordinances, and then ultimately, the project objectives? So how do we balance those things and give each of those their due in terms of, of importance, but also come forward at the end of the day with meaningful input to give to applicants for them to follow? So that was definitely something that is on the minds of the people that we spoke with. Some other topics, moving away generally from special-use permits wherever possible, and especially with respect to multifamily. Lots of people had very strong ideas about the need to accommodate mixed family, mixed multifamily outside of the special-use permit process. More flexi, yes?
I'm going to throw this in here if I may.
Sure.
Was there any discussion regarding looking at a specific zoning district for multifamily families, so that we can begin to direct potential developers to where in the town of DTJ it might make sense to consider developing, wasting time within one area that's not likely to be approved?
Okay, so the question was, have we gotten any feedback about a multifamily-specific zoning district where we might direct multifamily to go in pursuit of more affirmative action, more direction to applicants, instead of sort of casting about and trying to find places that, that we can fit it in under the special-use permit process? And the answer to that question is, everything is on the table, whether it's a new district for multifamily, a series of new mixed-use districts that facilitate a blend of residential, non-residential, and then, and quite possibly, changes to the standards, to simply make this a by-right option in at least some of the residential districts that already exist. So everything is on the table here. I'll also mention to you that there's a variety of residential housing types that, that should, could be explored in more detail. Small lot, small home arrangements, obviously accessory dwelling units, and a handful of other things that are out there. There's a lot of stuff that we can benefit from, that we can take knowledge from. Bring that back to you guys and share with you, and talk about how this, this issue's being handled in, in similar communities, and we look forward to doing that. So the need for, for flexibility in the application of development standards on vacant lots and redevelopment in the downtown, this is a perennial problem. Every local government has these kinds of issues. How do we facilitate good development downtown? How do we retrofit our infrastructure and still manage costs to be able to encourage people to come downtown? How do we keep downtown on a level playing field with greenfield sites, where frankly, it's cheaper and faster to develop? How do we do this? This was certainly something that was brought up and something that we will be addressing. Now, you know there is the downtown master plan in process, and we're going to let that process unfold before we're make, before we end up making suggestions as part of this process. We need to give that, give that project an opportunity to give us some guidance. We're not going to let it slow us down. We do expect to have some, some detailed information for you guys about what to do in downtown, but we're hoping that the downtown master plan process, and we think it will. We think that the schedules are going to work out, and that we're not going to have any, any scheduling problems there. I'll mention that the planned development conditional rezoning situation was mentioned as one that needs some attention, that there's some opportunities to bring the town's current approach into closer alignment with how it's done in some other communities. And I look forward to learning a little bit more about that myself. I think there's an, an interesting legacy here in, in Clayton, and that know that I have a personal interest in, in seeing a little bit more about how that works and, and how we got to the point where we are today. Additionally, more clarity on what policy guidance is actually adopted versus that that we rely on but that we haven't yet adopted, or haven't formally adopted. That's an important distinction, and, and one that, that, you know, stakeholders have mentioned on more than one occasion, that it's not clear what's adopted. Finally, the temporary use permit process and the standards associated with it need review. There's a real desire for more flexibility, more creativity with the landscaping provisions. Lots of comments about parking standards and the fact that they're outdated and perhaps even too specific in some instances. Combination of the park's open space greenway standards are perceived as onerous in some cases, and that may be something that we need to explore. So these and other comments be provided to you in a summary memo put together by the project team, hopefully by the end of this week, certainly as an appendix in the diagnosis, so you'll have more detail about what we've gotten back from our stakeholders, from staff, from the elected officials, et cetera. So I've talked about this diagnosis report a lot. What in the heck is that thing? So the diagnosis report assembles all of this feedback that we've collected. It gives some results of a policy guidance review, so we've sat down and gone through all of the adopted policy guidance that's in place. It's also, we've also got a detailed analysis of the current UDC. What are these sections saying? What do they mean? And how might we handle them in a, in a new UDC? All of this information will be put together into a series of key themes for improvement. So Ben's top 10, top 10 ways to make a better UDC. We'll be setting down those recommendations within the framework of a, a series of themes for improvement. We'll also propose some additional topics for further exploration, like that small lot, small house approach, or creative ways to incorporate low-impact development into your, into your, into your development regulations in general. So this document's going to be circulated to the UDC Committee in June, round about June 13th, plus or minus a day or so, and we'll meet to discuss it at your next meeting in June 27th, okay? I'll also mention to you, we're going to be conducting a day-long public forum on the diagnosis on June 28th. That will allow some interested individuals to, we'll, we'll come, we'll talk about the diagnosis, to, to, to anyone who wants to hear about it. There'll be a series of two presentations and some open house sessions, so people can come, if you work during the night, you can come during the day. If you work during the day, you can come at night. We'll be available to take as much input as we can possibly get. We will also be accepting public comments through the webpage for two weeks after the public forum, to give people an opportunity to weigh in on what they think about, what's in the diagnosis. We'll append the, the appendix of the document with what we hear during the public input process. And so that's the diagnosis report, and a little bit more about kind of the project in general. At the head of the conversation, I mentioned to you that be interested to talk more if you have some thoughts about project objectives, if there's other topics or aspects that, that you think we should be addressing, things that we need to include. I'd like to take maybe the next 10 or 15 minutes of your time and hear from any committee member who, you know, wants to share some thoughts, or some concerns, or some observations, or suggestions for the project or for the draft material that we're putting together. Anybody have any ideas, thoughts?
So I have two process questions. One is, believing the world is typically a G20 world in terms of 20% of the issues, or 80% of the issues, 20% of what's going on. With that, is there part of this process that will focus or help us focus collectively on where most of the problems will be UDC crop up? How do we spend the commensurate amount of time on those issues so that where as effective as possible, not get sidetracked in one of the things that are infrequently problems? Whether you speak to that now or next meeting, not my question, just that you consider that. So that's process question one. Process question two is, if the last couple of years have taught us anything, the world can change rather quickly, and the phrase was coined, the ability to pivot quickly when things change. So with that, how do we incorporate into UDC the ability to respond to new things that were unanticipated, particularly even from the standpoint that we work on something today and, you know, we get to the end of the process, the world changed on us in respect of that issue? So how do we keep UDC responsive over time and allow for the town to pivot with respect to those codes and ordinances for new things to develop?
Okay, great questions. Let me, let me attempt to answer those, or at least start, start the process of answering them, because I think that these will probably come up again, and we'll talk about it some more when they do. Your first question was, how do we identify the real problems? How do we identify those things that we need to focus on? And in my experience, those things will identify themselves. They will present themselves to us quite readily. The, the diagnosis will set down a myriad of solutions and recommendations to perceive problems. Some of those things are going to flow through the project, and everybody's going to nod their head and say, yep, that sounds just fine. That sounds great, and we'll move on down the road. Then there'll be the handful of things, and it's never what you expect, but it'll be the handful of things that cause discussion, hand wringing, consternation, concern, and, and we will take up those issues when we will take up those issues when they present themselves. If we get to the point where we're in the diagnosis or the annotated outline and we've not had a robust discussion about a particular issue or concern, then you will be the anomaly. We will absolutely, I fully expect concerns of this board and the stakeholders to bubble up through that discussion process. I'm not worried about it. If we get to that point and you feel like we're not handling the 80/20 problem, then please speak up and let's, let's spend some time focusing on that, although I think that that problem will solve itself for us. And again, it's, it's, it seems to never ever be what you would expect it to be. So, we'll see how that goes. In terms of your ability to pivot, I, I, it was a great, great question. We actually had a conversation today with some elected officials, and we talked about recognizing that you cannot anticipate every potential outcome, every potential convergence of issues, and it's necessary to write development standards that are capable of pivoting, of recognizing that we don't know how things are going to be in five or 10 years. What we try to do instead is build in the flexibility and the mechanisms to help us deal with it when it comes along, though we don't know what it is, we don't know what to expect. We do know that it will arise, just like you pointed out, and make sure that we build in processes, procedures into the code to make sure that we can accommodate for that. Having said all of that, I always stick around for a few weeks or months after a code is adopted to assist my clients with growing pains, working under a new ordinance, and dealing with unintended consequences or things that come up that we didn't realize or didn't expect. So, there will be some time where we're making this shift, this transition, where I will be around, but know that the, the development code that we're writing recognizes that we don't know everything and that the life's going to be different in 2024 than it is in 2022. And I appreciate you, you pointing that out. So, that's a great question.
Right now, Johnston County is doing their envision Johnston, which is their new growth plan, and you're probably aware that Johnston County has talked about transition districts, I believe is what they've been calling them, where it's like a transition from municipal rule, and they're talking about getting away from those transition districts that were never really used in the first place. I really feel like this process, because it is ahead of Johnston County, because Johnston County's not going to be finishing their envision growth plan for three to six months, can't remember exactly what the date is, and then they're going to go into a new code rewrite. So, we've got to remember that we not only have downtown and we have in-town, we also have E T J, and it looks very different. And not all of our E T J, we can never build enough sewer capacity to take care of all of our E T J. So, we have to acknowledge that we're going to have mini farms, we're going to have acre lots, we're going to have, you know, well-insectic, we're going to have county water lots or town water lots without the sewer. So, I'm, I'm really concerned about that and how, how we treat the E T J, and it can't be an afterthought. And, and I'm really, really big on density-based design and not having to come in and ask for waivers from curb and gutter for acre lots, you know, because, you know, everybody says, well, why, why is this, is everybody doing mass raiding? It's really because I feel like our code's pointing everything, and the development standards are, are so intense that, you know, if you're going to put in curb and gutter and sidewalks on each side of the road, you can do a 50-foot wide lot, you, financially you have to because you can't do 100-foot wide lot because of development standards are the exact same. So, I think we've got a lot of work to do there, but I think it would really be, we would really be remiss if we did not work with the county, because I really think that we can help craft the county's thought process and how to work with municipalities, because that's something that's not been finalized yet. It's just that, that thought is out there, is how does the county work with the municipalities to do these transitions? Because they don't necessarily want to put more density that is not municipal, tax-paying citizens, you know, right next to the municipalities, you know, that they're taking services without, you know, having to pay, you know, the tax to support those services. So, I really hope that you and Ben reach out to Brast and Meg Neelands running that process and really, you know, we try to work together to, to make this the best thing possible. Because I'm excited that the, where our, where our timing is, I really think that it could be something great if we and the council allows you guys to put the time and effort into that aspect.
Okay, yeah, that's a great suggestion. You know, it's, it's, it's a small world, and so I, I know and work with the, the team, the firms that are, are working with the county now. We've not talked about that project, but we can certainly find out a little bit more about what they're doing. I think the point that you make, which is, you know, this is a, not, it's, it's not a one-size-fits-all community. You've got downtown, you've got infill lots, and then you've got, you know, lots that are rural, lots that are, you know, never going to be, you know, 6,000 square feet in size with water and sewer, et cetera. And it's important that the U D C recognize that, you know, there's different contexts across Clayton's community, and I, and I get that, and I agree with you. And, you know, while it adds a little bit of breadth to the code, I think it winds up being a much better document if we do treat all of the areas individually. And, and so, we're going to talk about some of that context stuff base, particularly when we get into the zoning district-related material and recognizing, you know, these districts are, are more like this and those districts are more like that. We do have the, the future land use plan from the comprehensive plan that the town's already adopted, so that's a great step in the right direction. And I think, I look forward to talking with you guys about how do we, how do we deal with density and how do we create livable places, whether it's on a 6,000-square-foot lot or it's on a 10-acre site?
One other thing that I think we should talk about with the county is, and staff might disagree somewhat, or they might sit there and shake their head and say, yes, I completely agree with you, but there's a little bit of runaround in E T J now, where you, you know, somebody will say, I've, I've got a problem with this, and the town says, you know, says we don't provide that service in E T J, call the county. The county says, oh, no, that's the town of Clayton, it's their E T J, call back to town of Clayton, and town of Clayton says. And we really need to see how we work together because, what little bit of research I've done, I believe that the county is allowed to work with the town, and, and Dee Dee might be able to, you know, talk more about the, because what is, is the code, is, what is the county not, because you've got your zoning code nuisance?
Yeah, so anything nuisance related, we can handle in the E T J, so that's all our ass, our cars, things like that. We kind of have 100 working relationships, sometimes we can call and the governor's office will deliver, but we cannot go into the E T J and do.
And where that's super important is whenever we're growing and we're annexing into our E T J, and then we're having to drive through these areas that Dee Dee says we don't have any authority over.
Right.
We need to fix that, you know, we need to have some kind of agreement with the town or with the county to where, you know, there's a good working relationship there, and, and we know what to do, and we also can enforce those nuisance laws because that's, you know, that could really determine whether subdivision, you know, comes with a nice or higher-end product or a lower-end product because of what they're having to drive through to get to the entrance of that subdivision. So, I think that that's very important, we take that into consideration.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I mean, the, the point that you're making, certainly the, the nuisance laws are in your town code, and your town code's only applicable inside the corporate limits. The E T J, on the other hand, has your U D C. So, if you've got some stuff that's in your town code, but it's not in your, your zoning ordinance, your U D C, you know, then you can't enforce that in your E T J. And that, so I'm hearing you talk about issues of mismatch, right, with the nuisance provisions, where somebody who lives in town is subject to these nuisance laws, somebody who lives in the E T J is not, and there's probably confusion on the part of homeowners, there's probably confusion on the part of, of staff sometimes about what can you do and what can you not do, and it's hard to get a good answer. Okay?
Especially when the county's saying, we don't provide nuisance service.
Right, right, right.
Our nuisance code is actually going to be placed on, our nuisance doesn't actually fall under our technical, it's a separate department.
Interesting, okay. Certainly something we'll look into, thanks for that. Other thoughts, ideas, suggestions?
If I may? So, something that's kind of come up in some of our previous meetings is whether the town is getting in the way of the market, as in, we have developments where we know we need them, but we're not sure if this is the best way to go about them. And so, kind of a two-pronged question or concern here, I guess I should say, is like, first of all, how do we make sure that we are building enough housing to satisfy our demand, enough, you know, commercial to satisfy our demand while also, you know, dealing with the stock that we already have? But also, how do we encourage local individuals to participate in our local market? So, for example, you know, if somebody owns a piece of property, how can that piece of property be integrated into the Clayton market? You know, how, how do we allow people to develop their own properties and not just rely on national corporations or statewide corporations to do the work for us, if that makes sense?
Okay, okay. Yeah, I, I, it's a really good question. How do we know, how do we know how many houses we need? How do we know how much commercial floor area we need? You know, some communities prepare market studies and things like that. We do have some population projections in the comprehensive plan, and I do think there's been some, some analysis of where you guys are headed in terms of, you know, your commercial market. We'll absolutely have a look at that. We can get a rough idea of, of, you know, those parameters. If you need, if you, if the town feels like, you know, you need more detail on, on that, then there's some other things that you might do that frankly don't have anything to do with the U D C, which is sort of like a market study. Let's get into this and find out if you guys are satisfied that what we're proposing is going to, going to, you know, carry the mail, and if it will, great, and if it doesn't, then we can talk about, you know, it might be that you need to, to have a market study done or something like that. And as far as the, you know, the, I would say, let's circle back to this, how do we encourage individuals to participate? I think some of that probably is U D, U D C related and some of it maybe isn't. I think there's, that's one of the things that's most interesting about these projects is that one of the things that often comes to light is that there, there is the U D C and the things that it can do, but just because you've drafted a new U D C does not mean they will necessarily come. There are other aspects involved. What is the financing picture like? What is the school system like? What other elements of the community can be brought to bear on solving the problems that we talk about as part of the U D C but that the U D C alone can't handle? So, that's definitely something, somewhere, something that we will get to and something that we will talk about in great detail. One of the best examples I can point to for you is situations in built areas where you lack necessary infrastructure, and how are you going to, to, to get that put in so that the community functions, right? In greenfield areas, we pass those costs on to the development community. In already-built areas, that's not an option for us. So, what does that mean and how do we solve that problem? Some of that's U D C related, and frankly, some of it isn't. So, we'll, we'll, we'll dig into that as we go. Thank you. Others?
Comments and a question? One thing, and some of the things that we already mentioned, that we're actually mentioning in the, right of the plans here, you did, and it's good to hear. One thing that we can talk about in the U D C re-what happened is that we married up a growth plan with U D C, and it's good to hear that, and we know that some of the things that we mentioned tonight, mixed-use districts possibly, residential mixed-use, marginal mixed-use districts, possibilities. We also talked a lot about the special use permit process, which you already mentioned, cumbersome, does not encourage multifamily development. So, it's good to hear, you know, those things, and it's great as a user to hear a more friendly U D C, that's always a good thing. And, you know, there are inconsistencies, contradictions in the code that I'm sure will come out, and it probably has a list. I think he and I ran across one last week. So, you know, just being able to identify those and know the right time to get those ironed out because they're there. I know I have to tell them all, so I'm sure there's, there's everyone across those. And then, you know, we talked about the road plans here, the transportation lane, and having a transportation lane that the U D C can actually prefer to. And I know we're not there yet completely, but willing to get there, and maybe there could be some mention of, you know, I'm not sure how we plug any of the, you know, maybe some consideration if we don't have. And then, really just a question on my part, just not sure how this really happens, but it's kind of like, say, we had an old, a website and we get a new website, and you kind of, first thing you do is you transfer the old content. Is that what we're looking at doing here, is kind of transfer the old content of the U D C and then you start?
And then mix it and crazy it around? So, that's a really good question. The diagnosis, I think we'll go into a little bit more detail about which current sections of the current U D C could or should be carried forward. And believe me, there are parts of your current regulation that are not going to change. Why not? Because they're state law. Your floodplain regulations, and they're kind of your floodplain regulations, they're probably not going to change that much. Water supply watershed is one of the areas that typically doesn't change, though we're exploring some possibilities there. So, there will be some sections of your current code that frankly don't change. There'll be sections of your code that, that do change. I don't see this project as one of those where we take up your current U D C, pick it up, restyle it, drop it in the new U D C and start, you know, kind of bandying around the edges with it. I think that this is probably more of a holistic set of changes. Having said that, there are some pieces that, that frankly aren't going to change. We're going to look carefully at your zoning district provisions. The last thing in the world we want to do is create thousands of non-conforming lots across your community by establishing new dimensional requirements that current lots can't meet, or new setback provisions that are, that are frankly, you know, unrealistic or unreasonable given the situation on the ground. So, we're, we're very careful in thinking about that. There's a handful of the state laws that, you know, I mean, they, they really, they don't change, you know? Adult establishments, group homes, those kinds of things, you know, that, that stuff's really not open for a whole lot of discussion. We can tweak here and there, but, you know, we, we largely carry that stuff forward. You know, then there's the things that we, we can change and that we likely will change, or at least we'll start looking at, things like your development standards, parking, landscaping, lighting, signage, your design standards, not guidelines, your standards, making some changes there. Those are areas that you should expect to see some changes. I, I think that it's, it's logical to assume that your subdivision provisions, your infrastructure provisions, particularly those related to streets, are going to change a little bit. I, I think that's likely. I've heard a lot of discussion about that up to this point. So, you, you should, you should anticipate that. I think that there'll probably be some fairly significant changes to the kind of combination of your open space landscaping and greenway provisions. There's some opportunities there to bring those together a little bit more tightly and help them work together as a unit, which they don't really do that well right now. So, you know, I don't, I'm not envisioning this as a, we pick up the old and dump it in the new format and then go around and, and kind of tweak the edges. I see this as, as a more substantial holistic reconsideration. Hopefully, I'm not talking out of term, but I think that's the direction that we want to head. It's a good question. Any others? You guys are going to have so much time to ask questions, you're going to be so sick of me. Okay, so, where do we go from here? Please do take some time to check out the webpage. We are always looking for comments, criticisms, recommendations for improvement. If you've got any, any written comments or ideas that you want to send to staff, do it, please feel free. I think we're talking about a shared email address. I'll keep you guys posted on that the next time we meet, something that's shared among the project team members. So, we'll keep you posted on, on that. Staff is going to review the draft diagnosis, and we anticipate getting that in your hands in mid-June. Won't be that long, probably 25, 30 pages. Small by, by, by my standards, believe me. You, you guys will, will, will definitely, you, you'll have your opportunity to hate seeing stuff from me because as we get into the project, your materials are going to get thicker and thicker and thicker. But we won't rush into that. Finally, the first public forum. That's going to happen on the 28th of June. We'll have the open house starting at 11:30, there'll be a presentation at 12:30, and then I think there'll be another presentation at 6:30, 6, 6:30. And then I think there'll be another presentation at 6:30, 6, 6:30. So please, you know, swing by if you can. And if you can't, that's okay. We're going to record those. That's another important part of the project is that when we do things like public meetings and so forth, we'll be taping them so that they're on YouTube and people can see them. Even if you can't make the meeting, that's not an excuse not to show up. So it's important to, to be a part of this. That's all I have. Unless you guys have any other questions, I'll, I'll just say thank you. I look forward to working with you. I appreciate y'all's time, your expertise. And, and feel free to contact me via email. Get in touch with Ben if you need to. Just be sure to copy him on anything you send to me. And I look forward to our next meeting, which will be in a little over a month.
Well, thank you. Thank you. I have one, one question or statement. After you go through your rounds of public forums, and I know you're collecting the public input and collecting information, but will the role of either party, you will... Sometimes, I'm going to use this analogy. Sometimes when you live in a place, your home, sometimes you like vision. We give you input, but the, the input is not visionary. The input is not about metamorphosis or change. So would you or your partner also offer ideas for visionary change in the UDC? Where does Clayton, because the UDC is important, but the UDC is about where does Clayton want to be 20, 25 years? How do you want this city to look? Because that's, I mean, otherwise, this is phenomenal. So I have a fear because where we've been in the past 10 to 15 years, we're in this place now because of lack of vision. So but if you take the input just from people who, this is all they've known, without somebody saying, I've listened to you. Now here's a vision, I think, that we can look forward to or try to achieve. And to me, that's very important. And public input is important, and I think we all, we all love it when we sit here. But also, somebody has to give us, the Board of Adjustment, Council, and the Citizens Division, what do you want Clayton to look like? Because you may not be able to see it right now. So that's been one of my concerns since I've been involved with planning, is looking at Clayton far as diversity of income, wealth, educational levels, family demographics, commercial, retail. And the UC, the UDC can accomplish that, but it's going to need a visionary to guide us there. So I'm just trying to make sure, is that part of your role? I don't know. I didn't see the RFP or the prospectus. I was wondering, was that part of your role?
Sure, sure. So, you know, are, are we going to be casting the net broadly enough and bringing new ideas to people? Or are we just rehashing the same bad old ideas that we started with? And so, you know, I think one of the things that we have in our favor is that you do have a brand spanking new comprehensive growth plan. So that is something that you've got. That is a comprehensive document. It sets down a series of, well, there's hundreds of recommendations. There's at least 800 that are directly relevant to the UDC across eight different areas. So we've got that in our back pocket as a place to start in terms of how do we bring new and better things to Clayton? Will there be things that, that you hear from the project team that you've not considered before? Absolutely, positively, you can count on it. Some of those things you're going to like, some of those things you probably won't like. But, you know, we'll definitely be bringing to you suggestions, recommendations, et cetera, from other places. That's, you know, you guys bring your institutional knowledge of this community. What, what we bring is how they do it somewhere else. And, and hopefully, our goal is to take your knowledge and our knowledge, put them together and come up with something that's going to work well for here. So I, I would expect to see a handful of, of new kinds of concepts, certainly that you've seen in other quote unquote progressive southeastern communities in terms of managing growth, in terms of protecting community character, and in terms of raising the bar for development quality. And if we get to the point where you don't feel like I'm giving you enough new stuff, tell me. And, and we can give you some more.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, thank you.
Thank you very much. See you guys next time.
All righty. We'll take a... We'll take a five-minute recess as we transition to a public hearing. Call is back in session. Since we broke during the course of the meeting, for the record, Board Member Williams is now present, and Board Member Lee. The next item on the agenda is item five, public hearing, 2022-54-RZ Meridian Center Rezoning.
Mr. Chairman, I have a conflict of interest in this and I need to ask myself to be recused by the board because H-Town, or HR Commercial is representing the client.
All right. Thank you. Board Member Lisko is accused from the public hearing on the Meridian Center Rezoning. We're now here from staff.
Good evening, Board. So today before you, we have the Meridian Rezoning Project 2022-54-RZ. They're looking to go from industrial light, which is our light industrial I-1, to the office institutional in this area. The, the site itself is approximately 6.6 acres and it is off of 935 Shotwell Road. Currently, there is an existing building, but it is currently empty without any occupant in it. We can see here that currently it is in the, the I-1 residential. You can see that the surrounding areas, we have the industrial heavy I-2, some planned development across the way. And then to the south, we also have more I-1. The proposed zoning would turn this into office institutional, which is in line with our future land use plan and our comprehensive growth plan, which we'll talk about in a minute. Just showing you here what it would look like if it were changed. Just a quick view, this is where the signs posted in the, this is the front street yard along Shotwell Road. We believe that this is consistent and compatible with future land use. It preserves Clayton's character, allowing for growth and development appropriate areas. It's appropriate with the land use policy aspect of it too, as this whole area, a lot of these areas should be future zone for office institutional as well, to provide resources and benefits. If that feedbacks, you can mute mic number five. Keep your finger nearby though, because that's the chair's mic. Thank you. We also, it also corresponds with the goal of economic development, number one, where it'll provide high, high-paying jobs in office, potential office space for research and development, lab research, churches and other institutional things such as that to support the industrial area. Future land use map, as I've already stated, has this area designated for the, the office institutional area as well. The staff recommends approval of this upcoming rezoning project. And we provided, we would ask that you consider though, that approval of the rezoning would allow and permit use within the I-zoning district and could be constructed on the site. This could include other things such as, that are permitted under the zoning district. Could be hospitals, medical offices, schools, things of that nature. And it may be used for things like that. The rezoning application requires your recommendation that will eventually be taken towards the town council afterwards. This is a statement and consistency and reasonableness statement that we do find it to be consistent, reasonable, and fitting with the future land use growth plan in the current code. And I'll happily answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Here are none. We're now here from the applicant.
We, we endorse the report of the staff. We are prepared to answer specific questions and to make presentations. But they basically said what this is, which is, this is a building that is intended in its highest best use is for office and institutional. It's always been used for office and institutional, but it was built in a different world in that it was built pre all our internet communications now. And at that time, when Dixie had a major southeast market and the warehouses there were for Winn-Dixie. And this was really just Winn-Dixie administrative offices in this building. It's not in the design for any kind of commer, industrial use. There's no loading dock. You'd have to build a pit to, to store anything in there. The floor is basically a ground level floor. And you would, there's no door in the back for industrial. It was just never used for that. And it has been segregated out because it was separated out as Winn-Dixie moved out and, and also was affected by the 2008 move later when the market fell for this particular use. So the property, it's almost ideal for a strip center property. Right now, it is stripped out in the interior. It did have office space for the first building. And they had moved in. And you can see the interior of the building right here. And it's going to be an ideal office for someone who could, who could use this place. It's got right up to 1400. The, I carry the, I was a member of the faculty, but you can see that. It is in a clovered residence, a lot of industrial, all these are all warehouse spaces. Originally, these properties touched office and institutional with a particular line. Office institutional there, there's office institutional there. So originally, these properties were one until they ended up. You're maps of how they moved. Some of y'all remember years ago, this was Ross administration. He's had his products, so go hit, move it for you. So here's the building. It's got pockets amount, a large amount of parking.
That's all right, sir.
Lack of body with the same name like a... There's a large amount of parking. Here, there's no turnaround truck. This is not an office institution building. It's got, it's not a full staff, exactly what I, it's just a plan. I can show you a plan of the plan. Just go down those, you are sitting there there. And you'll get it better. You have any questions? I've got the, we've got the owner here. Stand up. This is an office, a man that is... At least for now, post your own name for the video release investigation. We'll talk at the back.
No, sir. We normally talk from the microphone.
Any questions?
No, sir.
Obviously, we don't talk about this property since it's had, I think, 2017.
Okay. Any questions at the applicant?
Don't want to waste your time.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Are there any public comments on this matter? Yes, sir. Please state your name.
Paul Flaherty. I don't know if I'm supposed to tell my address, 793 Baltimore Street, Clayton. But I'm, with HTR Commercial, we're going to help him market the property, and it's basically reiterate what Mr. Spence said. You know, you look at things like the ceiling heights, most industrial uses are going to be 16 to 30 feet. The ceiling heights in this building are around 12 feet. There's no loading dock. The, there's no drive-in door. It's just not, when Winn-Dixie built this building, it was built for the office part, and like he said, it got lumped in with all the other industrial buildings back there. And this is, O and I is the only thing that really makes the most sense in the highest and best use. So, anyway, I just thank you for consideration.
Thank you, sir. I don't see another member of the public in the audience. Now, I'll turn it over to the board for their consideration. Are there any comments from the board? If not, entertain a motion to either recommend or not recommend 2022-54-RZ Meridian Center Rezoning.
I make a motion to recommend, stating that we find this rezoning action consistent with the future land use map, and we find this rezoning actionable, action reasonable in, and in the public interest because the new zoning is in line with the adopted future land use plan and furthers the objectives of the comprehensive growth plan 2045.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve by Board Member Bennett. Is there a second?
I second.
Second by Board Member Williams. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Next on the agenda is new business. Is there any new business? Next on the agenda, Item 7, is Planning Director's Report.
What's that?
We're now here for staff.
Good evening. I'll be brief, but just wanted to give y'all a quick report. So, we are, fingers crossed, we'll be fully staffed starting the first week of June. We're expecting our new land development specialists to start that week. You've just got a nice briefing on the UDC update project, so we'll be continuing to work on that. We are also in the process of working to, to start work, hopefully, on the downtown master plan update, as well as the future, what we're calling the future I-42 NC-42 small area plan. Those are two small area plans. We're currently in negotiations with the consultants, with two different consultants on that, and we are hoping that we will be able to go under contract on those before the end of this year, or before the end of June, sorry. And then, other than that, that's about it. As you know, town is working on its budget now and pending budget adoption at the end of June, and there is a request in there. I believe it is still in there for a transportation plan as well, so pending, you know, the council's discussion on the budget and that adoption, we may also be working on a transportation plan later this year.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any informal discussion by members of the board? If not, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Board Member Powers. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Spence. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.